Okay, ready when you are.
Okay, thank you. Good evening all, welcome to the November 10th Board of Education meeting. I need a motion to call the meeting to order, please.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, for those of you who are not aware of our emergency exits, we have two back there and then two behind us. And if you're really desperate, out through the kitchen. All right. I need an approval for the order of agenda, please. Need a motion.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Christine?
Okay, I'm going to read to A, Approval of Minutes. Be resolved that the Board of Education accepts the minutes of the business meeting held October 13th, 2020.
I need a motion.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public comments, speakers will be recognized who wish to address the board on agenda items only. I don't think it's a little early, so, okay. We're going to start with our presentations and reports and Students of the Month, and we're going to start with whom would like to start. Mr. T would like to start. You're up. Calm down.
Good evening, Mr. Springer and members of Board of Education. On behalf of Mr. Meyer and Mrs. Ellis, it's my pleasure to introduce the Hampton Bays Elementary School Student of the Month, Hayden Wilson. Hayden, come on up. I'll let Mrs. Ellis take that out of the special angle, won't surprise you. Hayden was in Mrs. Ellis's reading group last year, and the two are together once again in third grade. Mrs. Ellis describes Hayden as an incredibly sweet young lady and dedicated student. Hayden brings such energy and excitement to everything she does, both academically and personally. Her love and passion for learning is contagious, and you see it in all areas of the curriculum. She's a positive role model and caring and encouraging classmate. Not only is she eager to learn, but she loves sharing stories with her family. When I spoke to Hayden earlier today, she spoke fondly of both Mrs. Ellis and her family and friends. She shared how Ms. Ellis is the nicest teacher she's ever had. She loves how Ms. Ellis goes out of her way to help each classmate and make sure the students are learning safely. Hayden really enjoys when the class goes outside to participate in physical activity workouts, which she and her classmates help develop. I'm thinking, Mrs. Ellis, working the core, the legs, and doing everything out there. Yeah. Outside of school, Hayden could not speak enough about how she enjoys being around her family and friends. She told me about taking trips to Suffolk County farms to see all the animals, and spending quality time with her neighborhood friend Emma as they practice playing softball and doing fun activities. Timmy, I'm thinking you and Trevor are really working on that. We've got a dynasty brewing over here, I think. One day Hayden wishes to finish college and pursue a career in medicine, become a doctor. She wants to help others. We are lucky to have Hayden in our school, and we look forward to the incredible things she will accomplish in the future. Congratulations to Hayden for being Student of the Month for October. There is no one else that's more deserving. Great job, Hayden.
We will move on to the high school with Mr. Richard.
What'd that done for you, Mr. Richard, when I won't do for you?
Very courteous of you, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Springer. Good evening, everyone. I have two very special presentations this evening. I'd like to begin by acknowledging the High School Student of the Month for October, Yvonne Campos. Yvonne, why don't you come over? So, Yvonne is a senior here at Hampton Bays High School. She was nominated by the English Department, specifically by Mrs. Perez, for having a 100 average in her Writing and Research class. Mrs. Perez gave a little quote here, "She's kind, polite, helpful, and always goes that extra mile." Speaking of the extra mile, Yvonne is also in AP Spanish, AP Calculus, AB, and AP Chemistry, so she's a little bit busy, might have some homework when this is all said and done. Her high school career has been an active one, and as a member of the GSA, our Art Club, Key Club, participates in softball and tennis, so Yvonne has really done it all, and she's going to continue to do it all. Her number one choice right now for college is SUNY Stony Brook, which is my alma mater, very proud for Yvonne to go there. And she plans on being an education major in the field of math, so something that the business of education is going to sorely need. So, Yvonne, congratulations on an outstanding job, and we look forward to a very, very bright career in education for you in the future. My second presentation this evening is also for a senior, Alexi Cruz Guzman. Alexi, why don't you come on down? This is a really unique recognition. So, Alexi, this is a letter from the College Board and a certificate, the College Board National Recognition Program for a Hispanic Scholar in 2020, 2021. Alexi did something very, very special. Alexi, why don't you turn, let's see, family over there, okay? On his PSAT last year, he scored in the top 2.5 percent nationwide, and the College Board has recognized that. Without surprise, Alexi is a very talented test taker and a very strong academic student. He is an AP scholar for his performance last year on AP exams, but this year he's also a little bit busy with AP Computer Science, English Language and Composition, Calculus, and AP European History. A very, very bright young man with a very big future, so congratulations, Alexi.
Okay, thank you. We're going to take a quick few-minute break so we can take some pictures. Yep, okay. We're going to take a five-minute pic if you'd like to take some pictures. Welcome back, everybody. All right. Mr. Clemenson is in a little bit of a rush, so we're going to let him go right now.
I'm not.
The floor is yours.
You know I could talk a long time, so...
Well, that's just...
Oh, yeah.
Settle in.
Great.
Okay, welcome, everybody. Happy November. You turn on social media in the morning, and it gives you your Facebook memories, and this time last year, Mr. Ferraro and I in the FBLA were just getting back from London. So, as much as I'm happy to see you all here and be part of the board meeting tonight, which we're still in London with kids on a field trip, but 2021 year is different, so... But we're moving. We're doing well. We are managing the public health challenges of COVID-19, and as we've been communicating to our community, the reopening plan is working because we're working together. It has a lot to do with parents, it has a lot to do with our faculty and staff, our administrative team, and most importantly, it has a lot to do with our kids. The kids are agreeable, they're compliant, they're adherent, they understand the protocols. You walk through the halls, and you see the arrows, and you have the face coverings, and you're doing the temperature screenings, and it's working at every level, from kindergarten, from pre-kindergarten, right down the hall there, all the way to the, to our seniors in the class of 2021. So, our reopening plan is working because we're working together. We'll start with our enrollment. We keep an eye on that, and I'll remind you that in August, East End schools were seeing surge, some schools still are seeing a surge, they have increased enrollment primarily from the city. Last year, this time, November 12th, 2019, was our November board meeting, we had 2,011 students in grades K through 12. This year, we have 2,012. So, we're really, we're really at a manageable level. We thought we would be a little bit lower, just remember, we were on that downtick of enrollment, as we're graduating bigger classes than are coming in in kindergarten. But we're right, we're staying steady, 2,012 students. So, we're not seeing that surge. You could see the breakdown, you could see the breakdown there. I'm going to put the next slide up just to remind us that our approach to this school year and why it's working is because the board's approach to this year is to be responsive and to manage a careful and safe opening, and to open and stay open. So, you can see all the spectrum there. We are currently in Phase 3, and so the natural question is, okay, Phase 3, now what? Right? Phase 4 is going to be post-pandemic, we're all back together again, there's cafeteria tables in this room instead of desks, everything's back like we remember it and like we love it and like we really want. But we're not to Phase 4 yet. So, Phase 3 is this, Mr. Ferraro appreciated, it's purgatory, right? It's one of the, it's the inferno. We're in purgatory right now. How long do we stay in Phase 3? Phase 3 is the opening of the valve and the increase of capacity, when and where we can do it safely. We're going to be conservative in how we approach that reopening of Phase 3 and bringing on more capacity. I can report tonight that as of Monday, this coming Monday, the 16th of November, the increase in capacity that we're able to maintain now is pre-kindergarten at 100 percent every day. So, pre, up until now, pre-K has been going two days a week, Tuesday, Thursday, or Wednesday, Friday. Just Kids has, was, got to the 100 percent mark sooner than Scope, just because of the room, and we had a child move, and so what we've done, there's no waiting list for pre-K right now. We're going to cap pre-K where it is. So, typically, if there was a spot, they're capped at 18 per class, and if there was an opening and someone moved into the community in January and said, oh, do you have a spot? And we had it, we welcome that child. Right now, we're going to cap enrollment in pre-K so that we can maintain 100 percent in-person every day for pre-kindergarten. So, that puts each section at about 13 or 14 kids. So, our pre-K enrollment is down compared to where it's been in the past, but those kids, nobody was on the waiting list. Everybody who wanted a spot got a spot for the type of program we have, and Monday, we will start with five days a week for all pre-K kids. Other places where we would increase capacity might be bringing on additional grade levels at a time, little by little. Right now, we have had successful September and October. We've seen Mrs. Pete teach, all of our teachers doing a remarkable job. Mrs. Ellis is a great example of that. Let's go outside, let's incorporate physical activity, let's, let's use some of the picnic tables from the Parks and Rec Department that they've donated to us, lent us for the year, to learn outside because it's a nice day. And we're, we're tricked this week, right, as it's 70 degrees outside, and we forget that winter is coming. But it's coming. And so, to open the valves now, as we're closing the windows and we're getting into the colder weather, where we know COVID transmits at a higher rate, everything that we are being told by public health authorities from the county to the national level, we need to be cautious. So, we want to stay open, so at this time, my recommendation is to only go as fast as we can, but as slow as we must. Though Phase 3, we're going to just keep living in Phase 3 for now. We're going to keep perfecting our systems, improving our systems for hybrid learning and remote learning, and when we can bring more kids in, we will do that. So, being comfortable in the uncomfortable is the theme of 2020. I know moms and dads are, have a tremendous lift as well, we, you know, we want to acknowledge that, in managing when their child is home and when they're in, and it's a purple day, it's a white day, it's a remote day, what am I doing today? And so, we respect that. We want to get you out of that situation as quickly as possible, because of course we want our kids back. We're going to do it safely, with public health as our number-one priority there. Any questions on phases? Okay. So, as we move to, there's a couple of other items, I just wanted to talk generally about COVID. Parents in the community have been hearing from me on a pretty regular basis over the last couple of weeks, reporting COVID cases, so I want to talk about that, and then I will pass it to Larry for our Finance and Operations Report, and we welcome Deirdre from Cullen Donowski today as our external auditor to wrap up. So, that's our report for tonight. I want to just acknowledge a few community partnerships. Mr. and Mrs. Michael Donovan, Family Out East, they are benefactors of OLA, which is an amazing organization that has done remarkable work for the immigrant and Latino community on the East End. You might have seen in Newsday, posted it on our social media, that the work that Mr. and Mrs. Donovan have done have put over a million dollars of resources and support into East End schools. We were the beneficiary of $100,000 of those resources. 250 Chromebooks that filled up our one-to-one initiative, so now we have device, we have or will have enough devices from kindergarten through 12th grade to have a Chromebook, and, excuse me, 40 Wi-Fi hotspots. Mr. Timothy Crook, a friend from Quogue, on the other side, the Donovans live east of the canal, the Crooks live west of the canal. Mr. Ferraro has been shepherding a relationship with, with Mr. Crowe, who recently, you'll accept a donation tonight for $5,000. That is for 20 additional Wi-Fi hotspots. So, these are those hockey pucks that have a 12-month subscription to them when a family is experiencing a Wi-Fi shortage or inconsistent Wi-Fi, and it would prevent that child from participating in the remote learning. We have those to lend and to sign out. The Long Island Community Foundation and Suffolk County, we were the recipient of $6,800 census outreach grant, so if you pulled into any of the three schools in September, you saw visual reminders of, to complete the census for a complete count, and we also provided for some staff time, personnel time, to make outreach phone calls to families, particularly hard-to-count families, to remind them and encourage them, and to offer some technical assistance in filling out the census. The last day to complete the census was October 5th, so the count is the count, it's over, but we were able to use that money in September, and we were the recipients of that grant. So, we just submitted that final grant report this week. The Workforce Development Institute, we're the recipient of a $10,000 grant for the creation of the Hospitality Program and Bridge Partnership with St. Joseph's College in Patchock. You accepted $7,000 of that last year, the last $3,000 came just recently, so you'll accept that donation tonight as well to support our budget. And then One Hampton, which is a new nonprofit, and we know it commonly as Katie's Closet. We were the recipient of 40 pairs of new shoes to go into Katie's Closet because of the virtual 5K that many of our staff and community members participated in. It was their first annual fundraiser. Katie's Closet is a nonprofit based in Massachusetts, and we had the largest team in that 5K, so raised money, and that money turned into new shoes to go into that, to that space for kids. Who wouldn't need it? So, thank you, Mr. Ferraro, for shepherding that relationship. I mentioned how we're staying the course, and pre-K, we're ramping up into Phase 3. Athletic updates, winter sports designations as of today, this could change. We are authorized in New York State for moderate and low-risk winter sports. In Hampton Bays, that right now only includes boys' and girls' winter track and field. Right now, a decision is pending on winter high-risk sports. It hasn't been decided that it will not happen, it hasn't been decided that it will happen, it hasn't been decided. Varsity and JV basketball, wrestling, competitive cheer, middle school boys' and girls' basketball, wrestling, and volleyball. The winter season would start January 4th. Mr. Walker is deeply engrossed in return-to-play protocols with spectators and locker rooms, and how this is all going to work, along with his colleagues in the athletic director world through Section 11. There's an AD's meeting Thursday, I believe, and we continue to await guidance from New York State in directing what we can and can't do for the winter. They're going to take it one season at a time, I think, is what makes sense, and the one that's right up on deck is just two months away, and so we expect decisions soon. I do want to address a couple of rumors that are kicking around Long Island, that schools are going to close after Thanksgiving, and that we're going to stay closed from anywhere from a week to January 15th. We are staying open, but today is today, tomorrow is tomorrow, and the news could evolve and change, and that's also the theme of this school year, is that we have a plan until that plan needs to change, and then we change the plan based on the information we have and the needs that we're facing. So, the governor's office had reached out to school district leadership on Long Island and said, is this something you're considering? We're hearing it. And we said, is this something you're considering? We're hearing it, that the governor is considering it. So, I think social media got it going, you know, someone told a friend who told a friend who, and then all of a sudden became fact, and we're closed, eat your turkey, see you in January. That is not the plan right now. Colleges, I think, might be driving this, because we're expecting to see some of our college students home at Thanksgiving, and they're staying till the end of January. So, colleges have reworked their calendars. Anything short of a closure like that really wouldn't make that much sense. So, if Thanksgiving, we close for two weeks, you still have seven school days after that two-week closure, and the only way that seems to me to make sense is if everybody locked themselves in their house for two weeks. I don't think that's going to happen. I don't think that's realistic. So, right now, we're staying open. There are no island-wide plans for that to happen. Some school districts will end up, I am sure, making different decisions. We will make decisions when we need to and when we have best information ahead of us. As of today, we've had 17 COVID-positive cases. Students are, we had 16 students and one staff member. First things first, the students are well or recovering, and the staff members well or recovering. Various, various situations from no symptoms at all throughout, to kids who had shortness of breath in some scary instances. It reminds us that COVID-19 is unpredictable in how it will impact an individual, so we take each of these seriously. We've had 10 cases in the high school, five in the middle school, two in the elementary school, 16 kids and one staff member. This distribution is not surprising. It's not surprising across Suffolk County, it's not surprising across the world. Doctors will tell us that they believe in their research, you know, that research evolves, and they're still early on in knowing everything they can about COVID-19, that there's a belief that there is a connection to... that there is a connection to proteins that exist after puberty. So you're seeing high school kids present more. We're seeing that here, certainly. I will say that of these 17 cases, they are not connected to one another in school. They are not the result of school spread. They're not the result of somebody being quarantined because they were close contact with one of these kids and then they became sick. As the Commissioner of Health told superintendents this week, there have been more than 900 cases in 300 schools since the first day of school this year, and they are not seeing school spread. This is happening because of Halloween parties, weekend parties, weddings, backyard barbecues. It's happening in the community and school is a consistent place where it's just getting noticed and then dealt with. So the Commissioner of Health has said to our superintendent's council in Suffolk County, your reopening plans are working. You're distanced, you're masked, we're cleaning according to our, to our guidelines, and we're adhering to our reopening plan, which reaffirms for me that Phase Three is a careful place where we have to live and we have to make those decisions carefully. A couple of quick protocol reminders. If you are deemed to be a close contact, you would be on a 14-day quarantine. That doesn't mean vacation from school, head down to Red Creek Park and, you know, get some sun. It means quarantine at your house. Go on your deck if you want, go in the front yard if you want, but quarantine is being home. If you're a positive case, you're 10 days isolated at home. That's from the test result. Day 10 must be no fever for 72 hours without Tylenol or something like that. So we're seeing kids come back. Everybody's come back, you know, after the, after the cycle runs itself through. We had our first case on October 15th. Those kids are back, they're doing well. The process works itself through each time. Our, our protocol has been pending tests in the household means that everyone stays home. So out of it, whether it's have an abundance of caution or somebody is symptomatic, you stay home until you have a negative test result. There have been recent changes to the New York State Travel Advisory. We're going to send out something to our school community later this week on this. But no longer is there a restricted travel list. Every state in the United States is now on the restricted travel list. With the exception of the states that border New York, so that's Pennsylvania, New Jersey, Connecticut, Massachusetts, and Vermont, you have to, the, the change in the restriction will put this all in writing. It's all on the governor's website and the Department of Health website. If you go to any of the states that I did not mention, when you are there, if you're there for more than 24 hours, when you are there, you need to get a negative COVID test before you come home. When you come back to New York, you have to quarantine for three days and on the fourth day or after, you have to get a COVID negative test and you're released from quarantine. If you choose not to do that, then you're quarantined for 14 days. But anytime from day four to 14, and you get a, you get a test and it's negative, you're released from that quarantine. We've encouraged staff and faculty to stay local during holidays because it does, it will impact our operation to have coverages and supervision for students. It's important. I know, I do not like being the person who continually has to remind people that we cannot have our traditions and our routines, but it is the position we're in and that's the responsibility that we have. So that's the change to the New York Travel Advisory. And why is that important? Because the Suffolk County Department of Health is seeing an uptick in cases right now. They're not, we're not alarmed, we're not, you know, jumping out the window because we're, we're panicking, but there is an uptick in Suffolk County on our positive cases. What does that mean? It means that if, over a seven-day average, over a seven-day period, if the average positivity rate is 2.5% or more in our area, the Department of Health and the governor will define that, additional restrictions get put into place, meaning if you don't test 20% of your kids and staff once a week at random, you have to close. We don't want to do that. We want to play basketball. We want to wrestle. We want to have a homecoming dance. We want to do all of this. We want to travel. We want to stay open, most importantly, first and foremost, we want to stay open. So that's important. We are not a yellow, orange, or red zone. Red zone is where the positivity rate is much higher. We'll put, we'll also, in school community communication, put links to this so families can read it and start to understand it. Our prevalence, I mentioned, cases are rising, but community spread is not happening in schools. It's happening out in the community and incoming from there. We have made a number of upgrades and we continue to. So remember, the reopening plan that we presented on July 31st was the September 8th plan. And then on September 9th, it began evolving and it continues to evolve. And we update and we work in real time, really seven days a week on this. Couple of upgrades that are underway in the schools. Musical instrument PPE. So we have PPE, Personal Protective Equipment, and our saxophones are going to have PPE. So those are bell covers on the tuba. Think of it as a sock over the bell of an instrument. Anything that you blow wind into. There are masks that have little, they're called slit masks, so you can just put the mouthpiece in so the nose is still covered. All of these additions are what the Department of Health has deemed a belt and suspenders. So you're doing better than what it basically required. What we're doing right now is basically required. We're adding that musical PPE because the music is important to us, the arts are important to us, and it's not something we want to just shelve for a year. That's lost time for our kids. We're stocking some additional desk shields and that way, if we need to deploy them into the, to the classrooms to put in additional desk, we would be able to do that. They're hard to come by. Winter's coming. It's like running to the hardware store to get salt before Blizzard or bread from the grocery store. We're trying to make sure that in the winter, if there is a national second wave, as they say, that we can get gloves, masks, cleaner, desk shield, whatever we might need. So Larry's building a little arsenal underneath this cafeteria and no one else has the key. We're utilizing our outdoor space. Parks and Rec, I mentioned before, graciously lent us 20 picnic tables, which are being used every single day that the weather allows for it. And next, right after Thanksgiving, we will roll out a new platform for our weekly health assessment. That's been a little clunky. Right now, it's a Google form. I'm not so concerned about it because we capture every kid as they come in with a temperature screen. Our staff is trained to alert, to be visible for symptoms. Our parent community has been great reporting symptoms and keeping kids home, but that is underway right now where parents would have an app and they would just fill it out. We would get an, we would get a report that says these kids were supposed to fill out the report and they didn't. And then we would be able to follow up with them more immediately. So that's, that rolls out Thursday for staff and then right after Thanksgiving, it'll roll out for students. We do that once a week. One purple team on Tuesday, white team on, on Wednesday. Our remote learning update, a tremendous amount of effort is going into remote learning for kids. We are continually improving our live stream instruction, remote opportunities. 22% of the student body learns fully remote right now. We had said that marking period two would be the first opportunity for families to come back into in-person instruction. And we've been conducted, which is Monday, this coming Monday, and we are in the process, we are wrapping up communicating with every remote family to determine what their decision is. Not many are coming back. So, so right now, it's 22% of the student bodies learning remotely. We anticipate about 55 kids going, coming back into the system physically, which would bring the learning remote percentage to 20.
That's through the three schools.
That's through the three schools. So just distribute that over 13 grade levels. It's not a lot. And we started the year at about 18%. So we built our capacities in September at 18%. More kids went out and a few are coming back in. We see after, after a positive case, a family might make a decision and say, I'm going remote. So even though we said marking period two is the line of demarcation, there is an interactive process that happens with families who are making decisions in real time. So that number could, does move a little bit, moves a little bit. And, and then a reminder again about our COVID communication. Email to, to the school messenger, so families who are not getting the emails, make sure your, the main office has the right email for you. Make sure we're not going to spam or to clutter or to junk mail. Our website has an archive of every letter that we send out under reopening page. We do not do phone calls unless there's a specific quarantine that's needed. We call that specific group of people. If a school closure is needed, then we would do a phone call. So sitting on the edge of your bed worrying if you got a phone call or didn't, or should you getting a phone call, you don't have to worry about that because we're not doing those phone calls unless there's a need for you to know certain information and then act from it. But the letters that we send out give a description and a basic explanation of why that, why we're not quarantining. For example, a child hasn't been in school and was out of the infectious window, for example. So those are our, those are, they, they tried in true ways. Email to school messenger, website posting, and then a Facebook post that drives you to the website for more information if you, if you so desire it. Again, this is our, you know, the, the protocol changed last night. It changed Sunday. Because each experience that we have, we learn something new and we adapt to make it more efficient, to make it more transparent. Anybody who has a question, we answer. And if I can't answer it, one of the amazing teammates that we have here can answer it or we go get the information. The reopening website is, the reopening email is still up and active. Or parents are reaching right out to the teachers or to their building leaders or to me or to you all. And so people shouldn't be afraid to ask a question or to say, why is this like this? We are living it so I can talk about it just like this. If you're not living it, it's very overwhelming. It was overwhelming to us in August, July and August and opening in September. But then once you live with, live it and ask the questions and understand the process, it's, it's just a thought process. And then you start to understand why decisions are made the way they are. So the message is, if there are questions or comments or feedback, our doors and lines are always open. So I'm going to stop before I pass it to Larry and Deirdre. Are there any questions COVID-related or otherwise that I can answer for the board?
No, thank you.
I think you got it.
Okay. Told you I could talk. Thank you, members.
Thank you, Mr. Clemmensen. Good evening, Mr. Springer, board members. Just a couple of things to go over tonight. First and foremost, the audit for the fiscal year 2020 is complete. Our friend and representative from Colin Donowski, Deirdre Lynetta, is here tonight to talk to you a little bit about the findings of the audit. It's a clean audit, no issues. The board, hopefully tonight, will accept the audit and then we will file it with the state and upload it to our website before the end of this week and take care of that We're managing the 2021 budget well, but I, as I have in previous board meetings, I want to bring you up to date on, on what COVID-19 is costing us. So far, we've spent over 450, spent or committed to spend over $450,000 directly related to COVID-19.
And what is that, what is that time spent, Larry?
The biggest portion of it, Mr. Springer, is the six additional teachers we've hired for those six sections in the elementary school. That in and of itself is like 250, almost $300,000. But it's, it's, it's a number that keeps growing. Today, with Ms. Holsey in the music department, we worked out buying the bells for the instruments. $2,000 expense, not huge, but we keep getting hit with the $2,000 expenses as, as new things come up.
What is the, that number is a start date from when?
That's from July 1st.
July 1st, 2021.
And the big, the big expense is made.
Right.
Because it's the staff.
Yeah, absolutely, yes.
It's these little, Larry, we need 50 more desk shields and I need 100 more gallons of disinfectant or things like that.
Yes.
Isn't that the goal, set by any savings on anything else that we're not spending on?
We are seeing some savings in, in certain areas. You know, we're not going to have the, the length of athletic season, so you're not going to have the amount of transportation with the athletic season. We're not seeing clubs running. We're not spending on, on the money on clubs that we would normally be doing. We're not doing shows and concerts and so on, so that money isn't being spent. So there is savings in different areas, but it's, it's a good chunk. It really is.
Are the prices for this PPP stuff coming down, stabilizing, not really going up?
Sometimes it almost appears like it is coming down, but in general, no, it's, it's pretty much staying where it was. A little bit better than, no, that's not fair.
You're producing more.
Much better than it was, say, in July. But, but since probably the beginning of the school year or the second half of August, prices have pretty much leveled out. That's where they are.
Where do you bring the shields?
At the moment, we're, we've used them in places where it is impossible to maintain a six-foot distance, either because of certain types of testing where the instructor needs to be able to see the, the mouth of the child, that they're speaking, speech therapy and things like that. Or in certain situations where technically the desk is six feet from the wall and the, but the teacher is trying to write on the board that's on the wall. So clearly the teacher can't be six feet away from the desk, so he put up a shield just to give that extra bit of, bit of protection.
That's way too free, Chris.
Exactly, yeah.
So you see them in the front row of most of the classrooms?
Yeah.
And you're within your contact window because the teacher is never right in front of a student within six feet for 10 minutes, which is what the guideline is. So the teacher's going to move back and forth across the front of the room and there's shields there, but they're never, they're moving target. They're never in one space to have a, a close contact with somebody.
The state and the School Boards Association is looking for aid on, I'm sorry, is looking for advocacy on transportation aid. We were alerted today that, or this week, that the state will not be aiding transportation from period March 16th through the end of last year, June, June 30th, unless school buses were running directly to transport students. So we were using our buses to transport food home, to move Chromebooks or materials home to kids if they'd have them so that they could work remotely. All that expense for that period will not be able, according to what the, the laws are right now for us to do. Again, it's a, it's a good-sized nuts, about $257,000. It won't be, won't be able.
Because the food is mandated.
So, so this is...
Shields are mandated by the state, therefore they're forcing you into this position.
Right. And we were given the directive to, we were given the directive to provide food. And we were given the directive to maintain continuity of learning, which required delivering supplies. This is an alarming one. So, so right now, the state education department is reading the law as it's written. So there's, so it's not necessarily that someone has been nefarious here and is saying, forget it, I'm not giving you aid. The, the black and white law defines transportation aid reimbursement as exactly what Larry said, transporting pupils.
Oh, that's pre-pandemic.
Right. So what, what is needed, and so state school boards...
ASBO.
ASBO, Larry's group, the council group, school superintendent, even the regions, just are advocating to get that law changed for this purpose. It just needs legislative change. Everybody's on board, but they have to let us know that... Everybody's on board, but they have to let us know that if there's not legislative change in Albany by the Assembly and the Senate, we're not going to get that money. So, the advocacy is important. Thankfully, we have Fred Feal as our assemblyman. We will have a new state senator when that election is called, but it's alarming because we did what we were told to do.
Yes.
In addition, the federal government, when they passed the first CARES Act, said, to the extent possible, continue to pay your staff and your contractors.
Right.
Keep them out of the employment system, which was being overburdened in April and May, you remember. So, we did that. We also knew that by managing our relationship with Montoc Bus and paying the contract, that when we opened up in September, the bus company would still be there, that the equipment would be maintained, and that the drivers would not have starved, or that the company would have gone bankrupt. There were a couple of companies that closed because districts in other parts of the state made different decisions, and they didn't pay the contract. It was over. All of those pieces together, delivering the food, maintaining our relationship with Montoc Bus, they, remember, they negotiated a concession. We renegotiated the contract, and some money came back to the district for savings. We did all of the things we were supposed to do. We weathered the rapids around this rock, around that rock, down the river. This is another rock we just have to get past, but it's an alarming one.
Yes, absolutely.
Any more shots?
Well, not for this year that we see yet, but we are starting to look ahead to 21, 22, and believe it or not, it's budget time again. Our budget calendar is also up for board approval tonight, and I think the biggest question that Lars and I have, and the whole team, as we begin putting together the budget, and I don't expect you board members to have an answer tonight, is are we budgeting for COVID or not?
Right.
Because if things looked the way they looked in January of 2020, that's kind of one budget. But if things look the way, if September next year, 2021, begins the way September 2020 began, well, that's a different look of the budget. Do we have remote classes? Are we wearing masks? Are we doing all the things we're doing now, then, you know, in the future? Or are we going back to the way it was a year ago now?
Seems to hinge on this vaccine right now, the one that's...
And how quickly it can be rolled out.
Yes.
Yeah.
But I don't know.
That's going to be our challenge in this budget. It's not so much to figure out, oh, how many books do we need? What are the pencils going to cost? It's going to be, well, are we budgeting for a COVID school year or a non-COVID school year? That's going to be kind of tough to figure out.
Appears that...
Larry didn't like my answer when I said yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Would that force us to pierce the cap?
I hope not. Deirdre's going to talk to us tonight and present the audit where their reserves are for rainy days. It's raining, you know, we've said that.
It's been raining.
It's been raining, and it might continue to rain. We practiced for this, right? We planned for this, and difficult decisions, I think, will need to be made, but there are paths forward. And one of the paths that we would only go down if we had to would be to pierce the cap. I don't think we're going to have to go down that route, but we're only in November.
And then, I figure I need, after all this good news, to end actually on a good note. So, I will just tell you about how things are going in the business office with our new treasurer. David has been with us, David O'Connor has been with us for roughly two months now, doing a great job, working out very well. Had his first experience working with auditors, our internal auditors, have been in the office the last two days, so he got experience working with them, and is learning very quickly. And I'm happy to say, you know, it was tough for a while not having a treasurer for almost two months. We certainly in the business office fell behind on some things with COVID and that and not having a full staff, but now we've sort of come together as a team. We've taken care of, resolved just about all the pending matters and gotten caught up, and now we're starting to make advances and build systems again. So, I'm really pleased with the way David has fit in and how he's added to the group. And I'll turn it over now to Deirdre Lanetta from Collin and Donowski, and she'll talk to us about the audit for 2020.
Thank you, everyone. Good evening. My name is Deirdre Lanetta. I'm the senior audit manager with Collin and Donowski, and I'm in charge of the external audit of the district's financial statements. As you know, the district has a lot of auditors. They have a clean auditor, they have an internal auditor, and they have an external auditor. So, the purpose of our audit is to express an opinion on the financial statements that allows the reader to have the assurance that they can rely on the numbers and therefore assess the financial condition of the district. How we do that is we accumulate enough evidence that gives us the comfort in expressing an opinion that the financial statements are free of material statement and that they can be relied upon. It's quite extensive, the procedure. We come in two different times a year, there's a bunch of different phases. So, the first phase, we obtain, we update our understanding of the district. We read the board minutes for any implications that would have any implication on the financial statement audit. We update our understanding of all the major transaction cycles of the district. Cash receipts, cash disbursements, payroll, capital assets tracking, grants, pension, that kind of stuff. So, we update our understanding, and we look at the processes and procedures that the district has in place, and control that they have in place over those transaction cycles. And then we perform a test of controls and walkthroughs to make sure that what they tell us they're doing, that they're actually doing, that the controls are in place, and that they're working. Once we do all that, when the district, we go back to our office, we do our risk assessment and come up with an audit plan, and then, once the district has closed their books for the June 30th year end, we come back in September and we audit the actual numbers. So, that involves gathering evidence. So, there's only a couple of major revenue things. So, state aid, we can confirm that with the SED, they have a state aid website. We can see that that's fairly stated. We look at your tax levy, does it match the levy that was approved, your tax revenue and the tax cap calculation. Expenditures, we do a lot of detailed test work and substantive testing and analytical procedures, comparing current year to prior year to budget, a lot of inquiry and observation. At the end of all that, we've gathered enough evidence to help us express an opinion on the financials. So, it was a very good audit. The results of the financial statements is that you have an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of assurance that the district can receive. That means there's no modification to the report that the numbers can be relied upon. We also have to follow government audit standards and issue a report on internal controls over financial reporting and compliance with laws and regulations. So, I'm pleased to report that there are no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies over internal control over financial reporting, and there is no findings with regards to compliance with laws and regulations. So, it was a wonderful audit, very positive. The district is in a strong financial position to hopefully enable you to weather the next couple of years. Larry's done a great job of managing your front balance. Some other districts may not be in that position, but I think going forward, like you said, you have reserves to maybe help you weather this if you have to, that's what they're there for. But overall, I want to thank the business office for their cooperation. It's a very intrusive process, and they always do with a smile on their face, and congratulations, it was a very good audit. Any questions?
No.
No?
I answered them.
I'll have to clean.
All right.
Don't worry about it. We'll get it for you.
You're going to do it for me? Thank you.
Okay. Now, we're going to move on to businesses, finance, and operations. We're going to do a couple of agendas. We will start with consent from 4A to 4G, looks like.
Mm-hmm.
And I need a motion, please.
Motion?
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Let's see. Okay, I need a motion on the approval with CSE. I need a motion.
Motion.
Any second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We will do consent agenda, 6A to 6G. I need a motion if there's no questions.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Approval of the first reading of the Board of Education policies. Oh, that's okay, that's what we just talked about.
This is a, yeah, this is a result of a recommendation from audit.
Yes.
To just clarify procedures in policy that we were already following.
Right, okay. All right, then I need a motion.
Motion.
We need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. Public comment. Persons may address the Board of Education on any matters of interest or concern. The board president will recognize all speakers. Time limits may be imposed based upon the agenda needs. Speak now for your piece. All right?
No.
With that, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.
And we'll see you soon.
Thank you.